But they're easily misperceived, so.
Is it true? It is important to be, you know, cognizant of that. Do you want to take a break? Do you guys want to start? Who wants to talk first? These are my questions.
Well, that's really more up to the students. Just remember, I have to be at sophomore sem by 3:00 and there's always a few minutes left to get things up and going, so.
Is anyone opposed to us just moving right into study session? Raise your hand if you're opposed to that plan. I don't see any here. I don't see any stiller. I still can't see anything because there are tiny screen.
Edith did not raise hands.
Okay, sounds good. I'm gonna let you go first then, Mr. Baird, since you have to be somewhere.
Well, I can't leave until we're both done. All I'm saying is that if you're going to go first, leave me enough time to do my part and still be gone before 10:00. Okay? So go ahead.
Okay, so let's do pain first. Let's step back to it. Does anyone have questions about pain lecture? The idea of gate control theory? Okay, so let's talk about gate control theory. In general, basically what it means is that we take advantage of the fibers that carry other sensations besides pain to kind of help block off some of the pain. And we do that by applying things like heat and cool and touch and other sensations to limit the transmission of the pain sensations. It's not necessarily an overload, but basically just, you know, we try to block the system. It's like trying to block a gate, basically. Because, you know, good stuff is in bad stuff. So that's about all that you need to know about it. That's why we use those kind of alternative non-thermical methods. You don't have to know necessarily detailed pieces about it, but you just kind of understand that's why we use these things and why they work for us. Yeah, distraction is an effective method. Not as effective as, I mean, obviously, we're gonna medicate them too, but distraction can be a complementary method to help with pain, so. And that's true, you know, of many different issues that we can distract ourselves from and decrease the effect of them psychologically, so. Um, it could be this particular mention of ideology. Any ideology can be anything, and that's a contributing cause. It's kind of specific to some terms related to pain. Like if you look back at this slide, that slide, it talks about like kind of the source of the pain. Is it nerve pain? Is it from healthy nerves or damaged nerves or things like that? It's more like this particular ideology is referring to. Okay. Are there questions? Any that are still on pain?
I don't see anyone.
Okay, sexuality. Sexuality questions? I know it's always hard when we just finished talking about it. Yes, small victories is one of the ways, yes, to help them like attain some small realistic goals to kind of move them towards feeling more positive than their selfish needs. Somebody else? Any place else still or any questions on sexuality? Okay, Mr. Baird, I think it's yours.
All right. Are there any questions specific to fluid electrolytes first? Anything specific?
1322 and 1332.
What was specific? Okay. A subnormal temperature will primarily occur in a colder environment. There's something happening in this situation, so. So it's convection, okay? So that's why a person has a meaning and has had some fluid shift out of the vascular space without a record. No, no, I didn't.
On the slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Other questions?
Forward on this, the hypo versus the heco of the limbic. Back party is a sign and symptom of the vote. And I feel like I understand why it is on the hypo limbic. But why, what happens with the hypo? I mean, what causes back party?
In third slide, we're talking about.
Okay, so hypo bulimic, our blood pressure is low.
Bulimic or low.
Not bulimic.
So we're talking about water.
We're talking about water, so our blood pressure is low and we don't have enough volume. So we have to attack party because we're trying to push the blood pressure.
We're trying to compensate, yes.
Okay, so what happens when we're hypo? Why are we attacking them? I guess that's the best way to.
I'm not aware of the bar.
Yeah, well, what says the bar?
So we were, what page are we looking at?
Um. One page out, 1319. It says, food that is said we call attacking and food acts as full bounding parts captive.
Okay, so in that context, what they're talking about is, as the heart begins to be unable to deal with the volume, it begins to be less and less effective. So in other words, the stroke volume actually begins to diminish, although the overall volume vessels is too much. And so it becomes less and less attractive as a problem. And so we still have a minimal amount of need and so our heart is trying to compensate. So it's being mastered with smaller lengths. But the full and bounding pulse is far more significant in that sense than the back party. Other questions?
Can you explain the difference between the ADH and aldosterone? Explain the difference between the antidiuretic.
Okay, I'm gonna try to switch to the document camera.
Mr. Baird, I have a question in Enid. If you could explain the difference between ADH and aldosterone.
Okay. Just a second, let me refer you back to the slides first. What page that's on? 239 in the Word doc? Okay. So ADH, remember, our body is primarily reabsorbing water. So antidiuretic mean anti opposing diuresis. And it's in response to a low blood volume. So it's in response to hypovolemia. And remember, we said the retinodermoid is what secretes it, the kidneys are what responds to it. And aldosterone is part of that adjuvant system, renin-adjuvant system, aldosterone system. And basically, what's happening there is the low perfusion through the kidneys is causing the kidneys to trigger this mechanism to increase blood volume. And so that triggering that mechanism causes aldosterone. Multiple things happen, adjuvant is released and it talks about more of that and blood pressure actually is 30. But the aldosterone component of that is going to save water and sodium to increase that blood volume.
So like the main difference is like one has sodium and water and the other one is water?
That's correct. Both of them are intended to increase overall volume within the vascular space, but they're released at different origins and they have a little bit different effect.
And they go with hypo bulimia?
They are in response to hypo bulimia. That is correct. Now, I say that, and I hate to sound like I'm kind of bittering myself. There are certain situations where a person becomes hyper nutriment. In other words, they lose more water, but they keep the salt in their bloodstream. In that context, ADH is going to respond to that, not aldosterone. And that's something you'll learn about. It's a dietary problem. That's something for adults too. Okay, so just right now, just think of it as one saves water, one saves water and salt, or water and sodium.
Thank you.
You bet. Other questions?
The tilt test?
Uh huh.
The all three symptoms or just one of the three?
Very good. On the tilt test, remember, there are multiple ways that can be considered positive. So a change in systolic blood pressure, greater to or equal to 20 millimeters of mercury, a change in the diastolic of 10 or more, and the change in the pulse of 15 to 30, an increase of the pulse, or the patient is symptomatic. Any of those four, it does not require all of those four to be considered positive.
So just the patient stating, when I stand up, I felt positive?
That's correct.
A positive tilt test?
That is a positive tilt test. In the context of the not being on an antihypertension, otherwise, we would simply refer to it as orthostatic hypertension. There would be a consequence or a side effect. Okay, here Enid talking, but I think you're talking to each other and I can't make out what you're saying.
You were right.
You're good? You're okay without me?
Well, it's okay.
That's okay.
Not till Tuesday, then they'll change their mind.
Well, I can take it. I can take it if I'm no longer needed. All right, are we ready to look at scenarios then? Yes, another question?
The hematocrit on the CDC test and the CME test, the hematocrit tells us exactly what we want about our volume.
Okay, so when I mention the hematocrit, remember, it is a percentage and it's based on how much of that blood sample that is drawn from the patient is solids and how much is liquid. And so when it says it's 47%, is the hematocrit, 47% of that blood sample is solids. So it's your red blood cells, white blood cells, your proteins, your hormones, everything as it's slammed down to the end and centrifuged. The other 53% of them is the fluid or plasma portion.
While we're talking about that, do you want to know the exact values for those yet or?
For the hematocrit and things, if I don't give you values in class, we're not holding you to them yet. Those will be introduced, specifics introduced to you in a book one. If I give you lab values in class, they're expected that you know. Level or something else.
Enid said there were some lab values on the blueprint.
Probably just potassium, but I don't seem to be.
Potassium, silk, hemoglobin, electrolyte. Those are just about the tests. Those don't mean.
Yeah, I think it just mentions the lab test that are the big parts of my questions, I'm guessing. Because if I need you to go look up a lab value, I will tell you that. Otherwise, Mr. Baird's actually nice on Monday mornings and Tuesday mornings. And so I usually put those in my slides. It's just the time I'm writing the slides. Jersey's always been, you know, you're on your own.
Mr. Baird, I want to clarify, because I have a ton of students kind of asking what I think is a similar question. As far as the extraneous kind of labs values that they're seeing on the blueprint that you didn't have so discussed in lecture, they need to look those up, look for normals on those, or they do not need to do that if they don't see it in their slides?
If they're not on the slides, then they do not have to look them up. They just need to understand what it means if they're high or low. So what is a hypo bulimic patient's hematocrit look like? Is it high? Is it low?
Right. No, I think that's on, I think it was some others. What else? What were your, like LDL and some things like that that they were wondering if they needed to look up and like normals on that are on the blueprint?
Now, again, if it's something we've tested over before and the lab values were in those slides, then they're still fair game.
That's a good point. I haven't played around those, but yeah, I see your point. Okay, thank you.
Any other question?
Can you pull the electrolyte, like what's on it and the oncotic pressure?
Yes. So remember, there were three pressures and somebody asked a question on discussion board that I tried to address and clarify. Remember, there are three pressures that affect whether the water stays in the vascular space or not. Now, I use the vascular space as an example, but the three pressures exist and interstitial through it as well, as well as any intercellular through it. All three pressures are in all three compartments, okay? But for your purposes, as a fundamental student, all I want you to understand is how they factor into vascular space. You'll build on that later as we go further down the pipe. So osmotic, O-S-M-O, deals with electrolytes. So when a person's electrolytes are within the normal range within the bloodstream, they have a certain amount of holding power to keep the plasma in the bloodstream with them. When they are elevated, they have more tugging power because they're greater than normal. When they are diminished, they have less holding power. Means the serum or the plasma will want to leak out out of that compartment into the interstitial space. The oncotic pressure is the cells and the proteins. So remember, all of our cells that are in our bloodstream, red blood cells, white blood cells, and platelets are all protein based. But there are other proteins in there too, like albumin and the gamma globulins and some other things I haven't even mentioned to you yet, hormones, antibodies. All of those are protein based cellular fragments or cellular components. And all of those together for the oncotic pressure. So when a patient has normal values of each of those, it has a normal amount of holding power to keep a normal amount of fluid in the vascular space. When those are excessive, such as I mentioned just one time, I think in the respiratory lecture about polycytemia. Somebody has too much red blood cells because they're a heavy smoker. Okay, that person has a higher than normal oncotic pressure and as a result, they often pull in water from the interstitial space and they often deal with hypertension as a result of it. They get too much water, too much of those cellular components. A person who's anemic is the opposite effect. They don't have enough oncotic pressure and so the fluid leaks out into the interstitial spaces. And an anemic person will often have coagulose edema and they may even have pulmonary edema. And if it's chronic anemia, they may even have ascites to go with it. So those are the three main places that fluid leaks out into. The third pressure was the hydrostatic pressure. If you think of hydrostatic pressure, the first thing you want to think of is blood pressure, but that's really, that's moving fluid. We're talking about just the weight of the fluid, if you will, itself. So you're talking about if you took a 12 ounce styrofoam cup of water versus a 12 gallon bucket of water, the amount of force that that water would be pushing on the sides of its container is much different. Okay, the little cup has a certain amount of hydrostatic pressure. The big 12 gallon bucket has a whole lot more. The same is true in the vascular space. If you have a normal amount of blood volume, you have a normal amount of hydrostatic pressure that is opposing the osmotic and the oncotic pressure. They're working in opposition. Hydrostatic is trying to push the fluid out of the vascular space. The other two are trying to pull it and hold it in there. As long as everybody's playing by the rules, everything works amazingly well. But when you've got somebody with hypo bulimia, it's like the person with the 12 gallon bucket. They've got more hydrostatic pressure in that vascular space than they're supposed to, and guess what happens? It overpowers some of the osmotic and oncotic pressure and they get coagulose edema, they get pulmonary edema, they get ascites. If you have someone who is hypo bulimic, it's like the little 12 ounce cup when you're supposed to have a 2 liter bottle. Okay, so now you have less hydrostatic pressure, meaning that you don't always have enough to oppose that oncotic pool or that osmotic pool. And so they're always working to maintain that homeostasis, that balance between everybody. So everybody gets their fair share, everybody has a place at the table. Does that work? Okay. Other questions?
I have a request in Tonka for you to explain third spacing.
Okay, third spacing is, third spacing is beyond fundamentals. Let me start by that. Okay, so if you want me to explain it, I will, but you're not being held to. Third spacing.
She just waved and said, no, don't explain it.
Okay.
She doesn't want it to confuse her other stuff, though she's got one.
Absolutely, that would be my suggestion. But just as a very concise explanation, it's simply this. It's a normal physiological response to the inflammatory process. We'll go with it like that, okay? So a good time to ask me about that again during this semester is during the temperature lecture when we talk about inflammation.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, thank you.
You bet. Hey, anybody else? Any other questions? These are great questions, all right? I'm thrilled. I'd like to hear you thinking this through. Okay. Oh, hold on. Go to the end.
The intake and output numbers in our slides are different than the numbers in the book, so.
So don't worry about numbers, worry about relationships. Meaning, when you look at those numbers as far as what's the typical intake for adult healthy adult, what's the typical output, recognize that it should be roughly balanced with the idea that the insensible losses we can't really measure. And so, and then I also want you to look at how's the main way we get fluids in, how's the main way we get fluids out? That's what I'm looking for on that. There's a question. Go ahead.
Are the medications on your section, is it just what's in your slides?
Are they just what's everyone's?
Like, is that what we're gonna be testing for the medication?
We're gonna be testing all the drug classes. So whatever medications are listed on the blueprint or medications that are either in or not, those drug classes. So like, I might have used, I might have used, what was it? I'm trying to tip my tongue, but it's not there. I might have used one example of a loop diuretic, but I might use a different one in the test question. As long as you see it on the blueprint and you read, oh, that's a loop diuretic. That's just like the first one that Mr. Baird talked about on the slide. And then that's about as far as you have to go, read the slide. And so that's the way to use the blueprint to your advantage. But I'm not gonna surprise you with any drug classes that aren't part of that, unless they're distracted. Remember, it's how important. I wasn't supposed to say that, I'm sorry. That's an unfair advantage, right? Anybody else? And I apologize if my humor is a little dingy. After listening to an hour and 40 minutes of sex talk, you know, it just does that to me, so.
Yeah, you know what I noticed? Like sometimes when we have an IT problem, Jay hangs around for a while to see if it's gonna be okay. He did not do that today. He bolted the moment he got us working.
Yeah, your first slide, right? That was all it took. Excuse me, it's up here. Very funny. All right, well, let's look at our particles here. At least at the moment, it looks like it's gonna work for us, so. All right, so just like all of my scenarios, take time, read through their, create a quick list of all the data. That's your first step, so any piece of data. Just create a list down your paper. And then remember, your second step is circle all the abnormal data, especially those things that pertain to a fluid electrolyte problem. Okay, and then your third step is try to identify, based on risk factors that are listed in that data as well as the abnormal signs and symptoms, which of those four problems does this patient have? Okay, so let's walk through those real quick for you. So this is a post-op patient. They had a sudden onset of shortness of breath. They have a wet cough. The IV bag that was hanging by gravity is now empty. It was full 15 minutes ago. So at what rate did that bag infuse based on the IV standard rates that I gave you the other day?
Would that be just that the bolus could be kind of?
That is a bolus. It drained as fast as gravity could take it. And in this case, it was 15 minutes. Breath sounds have crackles in both anterior and posterior bases, and these are vital signs. All right, so based on the risk factors involved with IV fluid therapy, especially that hanging by gravity, and based on the signs and symptoms, what's the problem the patient's having? Hypo bulimia. Okay, so remember, the next step in these practice questions is think about what do we have to do to help fix this patient's problem? So what actions would we be doing? Well, restricting their fluid, this was something that didn't happen as a result of their disease process. This was a nursing error, okay? So they may still have the freedom to drink, but they're not gonna feel thirsty right now, okay? In fact, they're gonna feel somewhat like they're drowning. They're gonna be very anxious. So we might need to give them a diuretic. Very good. Yeah, so PCP might order a diuretic. Which kind? A loop diuretic or which other kind? The thighs I typed. So either one of those would be an option in this context, but the PCP would decide which one. When we start diuresing this patient, what's the side effect most probable that we'd have to watch for, regardless of which of those two drug classes? Potassium, so we could end up making this person hypo bulimic while we're addressing their hypo bulimia, okay? What else might we do for this patient? Go back to your respiratory lecture. Raise the head of the bed so that that fluid stays down into the base and it allows the rest of their lungs to expand as slowly as it can and hopefully still meet their gas exchange. What else would we do? Oxygen therapy might be necessary. We don't have a pulse ox on here, but we do have a respiratory rate that would suggest their gas exchange is being compromised. Very good. Very good. Anything else? We're going to notify the PCP, and most likely, the PCP is going to tell us to save them off that IV, get that diuretic, and then call them back after that diuretic has had time to take effect, and tell them what the patient's condition looks like then, okay? Questions about that one? The elevated blood pressure is the kidneys could not diuresse as fast as we infuse, and so they are hyperbole. So if we don't give them a diuretic, their body will force some of that fluid out into the vascular, I mean, out into the interstitial spaces. And that's where the wet cough came from, is it generated the crackles, which represent pulmonary edema.
I like the point we made.
If the respiratory rates had not been that high, because these were above change, we still probably would. And in reality, their respiratory rate would be high. Okay, let's look at another one real quick. Almost our time. We're trying to read, please, one more. Read that one. Very quickly, list your data, circle your abnormals, especially if it's fluid electrolyte. Sorry if I'm rushing, I don't mean to be selfish. Here we have a victim of a motor vehicle accident. He has a pressure dressing that's on top of a bleeder. What's a bleeder? Say it real loud. An arterial bleed, okay? So basically, they were losing blood, everything in it, so that means cells, fluid, electrolytes, everything, at a high speed. The pressure dressing is to stop that loss, okay? And then this, what would we refer to that as? The decrease in level of consciousness, and then there's the vital signs. Notice how this person is tachycardic and tachypneic, both, but look at their blood pressure. So in this case, these are trying to compensate for the decrease in oxygen carrying capacity. In other words, this person, some people would say that this person is anemic. Well, they are, but they're anemic due to blood loss, not because of a nutritional problem. Okay, so, what's the nature of our problem here? Hypovolemia. So what are some things that we would do for this patient?
Would you give them normal saline, private, at least increase their volume?
That's right. We're going to give them an isotonic fluid, so that might be a normal saline, that might be LR, but ultimately, what isotonic fluid do we need to give them? Blood. This person is probably going to be low enough, we need to give them blood. And so we're going to have to do a type and cross, and then, as soon as that's available, infuse or transfuse that blood. What else might we do for this person? Well, that is correct. So in this case, the pressure dressing is keeping it at bay, but who's going to suture up the problem? The doctor. The PCP is going to do that, that's not a nursing action, okay? What else can we do? Apply oxygen, so that whatever red blood cells are still available are fully loaded, okay? What else might we do? Put them on a monitor, how count them? Well, it does allow us to see a continuous heart rate, that is true, but because they've lost all of the components of the blood, they are at risk for developing an arrhythmia and potentially, a life-threatening one. So yes, this person would need to be on a monitor. What else?
Would you also get, uh, the monitors to see what they have?
Yes. Yeah, we would have to draw a CBC to know exactly how much blood they have lost, because that will guide the PCP in telling us how many units to transfuse. That is correct. Okay? Is there anything else we would do for this person? Well, the saline lock wouldn't be necessary, because we're going to put an IV with fluids in there. So we would say the lock it after we got them reestablished, more normo-velemic, okay?
Would you give them like a warm blanket, does that make the warm?
Warm might help as well for comfort, but remember, warmth, vasodilates. If vasodilates somebody who's hypovolemic, then we actually affect perfusion elsewhere. So we have to find a fine balance between that. We keep them comfortable, but our goal is not to cause them to vasodilate. What about laying them flat or modified Trinvenberg? Absolutely, because what's the three places we want them to perfuse most? Brain, heart, and lungs, and then the second round, the liver and the kidneys. And so if they've only got a certain amount to work with, you want to keep it all in the center and not out in the periphery. And again, that's why the very warm blanket is not the best approach for this person, because that will dilate those peripheral vessels. All right, any other questions about this one? Okay, I apologize, but I'm not going to get to do the fourth one with you, since I don't have four minutes to race to my office and get the others set up for the sophomores. Thank you all for your tenderness.
Mr. Beer, is the last one, hypovolemia? I just wanted to know.
Yes, hypovolemia. So look again at your actions that we would take to address that person. So he has abnormal intake, okay, so he rarely eats more than twenty-five percent of his meals, and he has abnormal losses, both of which are causing the loss of press in, and then we see the symptoms of that based out here, okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
Could you do the special one this week?
Yeah, yeah. None of the questions were answered.
So we're talking about...